Welcome, everyone, to the 5:30 meeting today. And we have some special guests. And first thing, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
All right. Item number three on the agenda, interviews for legal services. Mr. Hewitt, are you going to be in charge of that or Kirk?
This, this, it wasn't my action item. I believe this was Ms. Thomas's or Mr. Meyer's?
Probably. Well, the proposals came in. I think we all agreed to interview everybody that submitted, so I'll take it. Sumral Sugg is first, or, okay?
Hey, thank you all for having me. I'm Trey Bernsson. This is my colleague Chip Payson. We're from Sumral Sugg Attorneys in New Bern, North Carolina. We, our firm has, this year, we're celebrating 75 years. And for that 75 years, we have been actively involved in the local government practice. I had been at the firm three years, and Chip's been at the firm almost a full year now. Both of us have background in local government law. Our firm, every attorney, we have about 10 attorneys, every attorney does some form of local government representation, whether it's general legal counsel or litigation. We also have a robust real estate estate practice that does touch on local government quite a bit. And so, we are what we consider ourselves a wraparound service law firm for our local government clients. We represent a handful of towns, cities in and around New Bern, and then represent three counties, Lenore, Jones, and Pamlico. My primary practice area is the local government. I'm the town attorney for the town of Bayborough in Pamlico County. I do associate deputy work for Lenore and Pamlico County, and then associate deputy work for the town of River Bend. And then about 75, 80% of my other practice side is litigation for local governments. Today, I was actually in Wilmington doing some of that type of work. I find myself in Wilmington about, on average, once a month, and then other attorneys are also, in our office, are also around Wilmington, almost on average, once a month for some reason or another. It's because of that that we are very excited when Clark Wright sent us the RFP for Holden Beach. And we were very excited to get it and to put in a response because our firm is in the early stages of looking at an expansion opportunity in this area. And so, because of that, when we saw Holden Beach was in need of legal services, we wanted the opportunity to get in front of you, to meet you, and put our name in the hat, so to speak. With us, like I said, it's wraparound services. We provide everything for local governments with the general counsel side of things. One of the benefits, you know, I know a lot of us are wondering, the, you know, drive from New Bern to Holden Beach is pretty, pretty lengthy drive, so why are we here? And it's because of that expansion opportunity that we see that we're excited to meet with you guys. Because of that, we put in our response our two fee structures for local governments. However, we are flexible, and if we're able to come to, you know, come to a understanding here that you all would like us to perform services, we're happy to work with you on creating a solution that works for both the town and us. But selecting an attorney, especially with the unique issues that coastal towns, as yourselves have, selecting an attorney is about trust and relationships. And so, you have to, you know, select that based on a trust relationship that you're getting good counsel. And that's something we do, and we pride ourselves in with all of our local governments. There's a reason we have a storied history of local government practices because we provide that service. And so, that's the pitch. We're here to answer any questions. Do you have anything to add?
I do not.
All right. So, we're here to answer any questions you all have, and we're here for as long as you'd like us to be. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. You still want to pour? You can go. First of all, we, as a town, and the citizens, voters, and property owners, all appreciate your being here. Town of Holden Beach has a history of pretty much being a well-behaved town. We've been very fortunate through the years since 1969 to be out of the press for lawsuits and so forth. We've got a pretty good history, no shootings or knife cuttings at our meetings and that kind of thing. We, we have an experienced staff, town manager and clerk, been here 15-plus years, and many of our other staff members. We feel like we are blessed with the staff's ability to take care of things and run the town as they're asked to do so by the citizens and the elected officials. The neighbors that we have in the community, relationships is strong. We have a good relationship with our, our town neighbors, our county, and our state officials. And the town of Holden Beach has received numerous awards through the years. Last year, we've got some more pending that are going to be announced shortly from the things we've done in the past. So, we're proud of what we've accomplished and going to continue to accomplish. The previous attorney that we had for several ti, several years lived here on the island, he was in the beginning of a retirement thing, and we've got a temporary replacement right now. He's a well-meaning young lady and so forth. So, the town is looking to continue the, the good service that is provided to our property owners and so forth and so on. And I don't want to talk too much here because I'm sure there's a lot of information that's going to be sought from our commissioners and our staff, but we're very informal and appreciate the ability to communicate without a whole lot of hoopla informalities. So, with that, our mayor pro tem, Tom, you want to continue? And I don't know if you've got anything pre-planned about how you'd like to see it done, or any of the commissioners have a way that you'd like to do it, other than just an informal discussion, back and forth, questions?
I think informal is good. I had a couple of questions, I guess, maybe clarifications, things like that. Trey, I, you mentioned you've got, it looks like, a lot of judicial experience. And Chip, I was impressed by the Washington DC Special Executive Officer, Office of the President. Now, that, I'm, I'm going to show my ignorance here, 1997, so that was Clinton or that was Bill Clinton?
That was President Clinton, yes.
Okay. And then, also up in Massachusetts. So, it sounds like you're relatively new to the coast or down here, or is that?
Living down here, yes. So, I was born in Iowa. I went to Indiana. I slowly moved east, ended up in Massachusetts. My wife is from a large family, and her brother works at Cherry Point in Havli. So, we've been coming down here to North Carolina for years. But living down here and moving down here, yes, relatively new.
Okay. Sounds kind of like my story. I started in Illinois, which was a competitor against Iowa.
I was, I grew up in Davenport, Iowa, right off Mississippi.
I was born in Mulholland.
Oh, were you? Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. I went to University of Illinois, and then ended up, same story, loved it, moved down here.
Wow.
Same, similar story. In terms of coastal experience, I mean, we've touched on a couple of things. I think the big issues, we, one in the past was just easements. We had some nourishment projects. We had to get easements from everybody. We're looking at a core project, we'd have to get easements from everybody. It's not easy to get. It's cause, you know, it's put some nourishment projects kind of on the brink by not having the easements. The other one that's out there looming for us is the inlet hazard area, and I'm not sure how familiar, but Holden Beach seems to be having the brunt of, in terms of taking up land or expanding the inlet hazard area on the west end, it's just out of control, in my opinion. And, you know, and we've not talked about legal action, but if you compare what they're doing to us versus all the other beaches, it doesn't seem fair. But I'm just curious on your coastal, kind of more specific issues that, you know, beach towns have versus other clients that you may be working on.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we do, I, I have done in my line of work with some, our local governments, a lot of work with KAMA and doing, you know, coordinating with KAMA. Usually, in that regard, it's property owners getting permitting and permitting through and getting approvals from the town or county, and then having to coordinate with KAMA for the development along, you know, waterways. And so, I have working relationships with KAMA when it comes to those types of situations. And then, as far as obtaining easements, there's a carrot stick approach, so to speak, in how a town can, can acquire those, which I'm very familiar with. And I will say that, you know, that is, the analogy, the analog there is all towns and cities have, especially with a town that's growing in population, they have unique issues when it comes to population growth and the infrastructure, needing to have land for the infrastructure, which is going to require either easement, voluntary relinquishment of rights, or, you know, condemnation proceeds, which I'm very familiar with. And so, I think that is kind of the analog as to what you're discussing.
Yeah. I think we went down that path, and I forget the percentage we got, and then the rest, we're looking at condemnation to make it happen. I was also interested in your flat fee arrangement. We're in the middle of budgets, so nice level budgets are kind of appealing. I assume that's something you need a little bit of experience to say, this is how much service we're going to need going forward, or how do you set the scope of services when you're talking a flat fee?
Yes, sir. That's a great question. So, I, I put that in there to just illustrate the two types of billing methodologies we have with local governments. Specifically, our counties operate under that flat fee because we've been with them for a number of years. We know the services they need, and we, you know, we, at times, have negotiated that flat fee, but for, I would say, a pretty long while, we have kept steady with our flat fee for our counties. I will tell you, Lenore County is a fairly new county client, and how we structured it was, in the agreement, was an hourly not to exceed a certain amount. That way, we could kind of gauge how much legal services were you using, rather than charging a flat fee, and you not use it all, so that you're not losing your shirt. And then, if you're not to exceed a certain amount, we get to that amount, and if we're working over, well, then, that's, that's on us. But that has seemed to work for the first year or two, and then from there, renegotiate whether a flat fee makes sense. Like I said earlier, I think there are a lot of opportunities here that we're willing to work out some kind of solution on that billing issue with the town that would be appealing to both the town and the firm, that we're open to creative billing methodologies.
Okay. And then, you talked about expansion, I guess. Yeah, we're a long way from New Bern. I don't know what your timeframe is. Would you, where would you expand? Would you put somebody there? Would they still be driving from Wilmington, or how do you?
So, when I say the early stages of expansion, we have a lot of work in Wilmington and Hanover County. I personally have clients that are operating in Pender County, and so have had some reason to be down in this area, Pender and Brunswick. And so, what I believe we're looking at is structuring either office-sharing type of space or some ability to us to be in Wilmington, and then, if we were, you know, selected, that we would try to coordinate Wilmington office days, so to speak, or Wilmington events along those meeting dates, so that you weren't, we were not driving from New Bern, two and a half hours to get here. We're just driving from Wilmington, which was an easy, you know, 45-minute drive today. And so, I think that's how we would see it from an early perspective. And then, if it makes sense, if we're able to work into the Wilmington market, expand by adding people, I think that's something that, from a firm perspective, we would like to do long-term, but that's also above my pay grade at this time, but I know that that's a, in a conversation that we're having internally.
Okay. Because our, our meetings are at 5:30.
Yeah.
And we've had some go to nine o'clock at night, which is a long, you know, late night to drive back to New Bern, or I'm not sure, you know, where you'd be from. And then, on the remote, I assume, I assume that you prefer to be remote, or what would your, it's a monthly 5:30, third Tuesday of every month?
So, it really would be up to the council's preference. If the council, council would want us here in person for meetings, we're happy to attend. And again, I know that the travel time and cost is a consideration, because you're stewards of the taxpayer money, you have to consider that. And so, we would like to work out some, if it's a flat fee arrangement with travel and attendance of meetings, we can do that. But on meetings or non-council meetings, but other meetings that you would want an attorney, if you, the council was comfortable with remote work, we have no problem with remote work via conference, but it would be, you know, at the council's kind of discretion.
But I also think at the beginning, to continue to build the relationship, I think it would be important for us to be either, or ultimately, we make a decision, consultation with the council, to do much remote work. I think, starting out of the gate, to see how we work, to see how you work, we're in the same room, I think that's critically important to get a good foundation to start.
Okay. And you do have some remote clients, or how do you?
Yeah, yes, we do, and we do quite a bit. When you say remote clients, I mean, a lot of our local government practice, you know, I would say probably 60 to 70% is done in the office because you're researching, you're drafting, you're doing those communications, and then the other 30 to 40% are the meeting attendants. We have, in the past, when a local government wants us to attend a meeting remotely, we'll attend the meeting remotely. And so, we've done that before. But typically, most of our governments want to stay in person.
Okay. And I don't want to get technical, and Heather can bail me out, but we use Facebook Live for broadcasting, so it's not like Zoom where you can log people in and give you the floor. I guess we would work it out, but it's, you know, it's not an open mic situation where you, as a participant, along with the rest of the world, can, can chime in. So, it would have to be like a phone call, I guess, or something like that?
I think, yeah, phone call, setting up a Zoom call with the, I think, the, the town clerk was, you know, exceptionally helpful and accommodating on today's meeting, if we wanted it in Zoom or in person. And again, to go back to Chip's point, I think, starting out in a relationship, and it goes back to having trust and confidence in the services, that we would want to be here in person, so you could see us, we could see you, and get a feel for how you work. And from there, can adapt, okay, what system would work if we were going to do remote work?
Okay. Okay. I think that addresses my point, so let somebody else step in.
We've got about, what is that, about 10 minutes left?
I had a quick question. The 99,000 flat rate, is that based on our particular county or size, or is that just your set rate for?
Those are the, excuse me, yes, those are the two set rates for Pamlico and Jones County, and I believe that's also the not to exceed rate for Lenore. It's based on historical performance over the years of how much legal services they needed, and that's what made sense for them. I, I don't know if that's something that, you know, that you would need that much in legal services. I would imagine that we would want to come, you know, look at either the last three years' historical records of your legal services, and if we were to do an hourly rate with a not to exceed that amount that you've done at the best, average, the last three years, to me, that would make sense. And then, after the first year, we could look at that and say, okay, well, we're, we're not, we're not getting anywhere, anywhere close to your legal budget, or we are far exceeding, and we need to do some kind of renegotiation.
So, is, is that included, you attending the meetings, versus if we charge an hourly weight rate, would we also be charged mileage and, and time traveling with that hourly rate, or is that covered? Trying to see the difference?
Understood, yes. So, for the flat fee, for the flat fee proposal, and again, this is just the two rates, the two methodologies we have with our clients, the flat fee, the travel is included. We don't charge for travel because it's, it's contained within that flat fee. For the hourly, typically, our policy is, it's billed for the travel time. However, like I said, I think there's some way that we can work, some agreement, whether it's a flat fee for meeting attendance, which includes travel, and then hourly work for the research, drafting, and things that are outside of that, meet regular meeting attendance. We're open to that type of, you know, creative billing.
And I think there's an appreciation that we are a bit of a distance away. And in order for us to make this work, and for this to work for you, there has to be some creativity. You can't, you can't operate typically like it does other places because of the distance, and we're willing to be creative to make that happen.
I would be in a town a little bit smaller than some of those counties, so.
Right.
Okay.
I would say that you are, population-wise, smaller than some of the counties, however the, the, in some of them, I think you're about equal, because there's some, very, fairly small counties. But the, I will say, the, the scope of legal issues that you might face versus some, you know, Jones County, for instance, I do think there is probably, you all face it, as the mayor said, facing more issues than your average, you know, inland county would face.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that was, she, that kind of alluded to what I was going to ask about. We're a lot smaller than the counties. And again, working on a, you know, to start with, working on the, I think you need, we need to be in person at the meetings. So, like you say, kind of get a feel as to how we operate our meetings, and they're usually pretty, not, most of the time don't go to nine o'clock, but sometimes we have a, a pretty heavy schedule, and there's a lot of discussions, you know, sometimes it can take a little bit of time. But, you know, if, if, if the travel time, you know, we're going to have, we just usually have the one meeting a month, normally. That's when I was persuaded to run for office, that's what I was told. But we have quite a few special meetings if, number one, we can't get it done in a regular meeting, or have to hold something over. Or, as in the, this past year with the tax stuff, I don't think you have to attend every one of those, but it is, if, I think it would be, working on a, instead of a flat rate where, you know, I can, there's a lot of stuff there that I'd just, you know, training seminars, stuff like that, I don't think we need, we're going to need that kind of stuff. But have you ever done any work with the Local Government Commission? Is that something that, that you have any dealings with?
The LGC? Yes. We've done, I have not done work for them. I have worked with them on a few things. I have a, actually have a really good friend and colleague over there that helped me with one of our town's water systems and some issues. So, I've done some work with them in that capacity. But that's, it's been fairly limited. What I will say, just to answer your point, you know, I, in our, in our response to RFP, we put these two, flat fee versus hourly, and I certainly wouldn't expect the town to go to that level of flat fee. I think that there would be some ability to, you know, have a, you know, meeting attendance flat fee of $700, for example, and then $700, $800, and then hourly for the other work performed, preparing for meeting, for drafting documents, going through the real estate, the other things within your RFP. So, I, again, I think that's something that if you feel comfortable with us and you're interested, that that's another conversation that we can engage in to have, you know, that creative billing of what would work for both of us.
And I also think, you know, we, we've done this, we have done this a long time, Trey's done this a long time. We understand that meetings run long. That's the nature of doing government work. So, the fact that it starts at 5:30 and doesn't end at 10:30 until 10:30 is not a problem at all. In terms of training in the LGC, I know Sumral Sugg has put on and attended classes where we've done training. And up north, when I was General Counsel for the city of Gloucester, which was a coastal community of about 35,000 people, it was the, one of the last two working fishing ports in Massachusetts. Every two years at the beginning of the city council session, we did a training, and I did my portion of the training, talking about public records requests and those kinds of things at the beginning. So, I think we've done, we, you know, we've done training as well.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pepper?
If we needed you to meet face-to-face for some reason, needed you to come down here, what would the lead time look like for that? I mean, you need a day, two days?
I think, that's a really good question. I, I would think that to be, you know, to overestimate two, two days, I mean, between the two of us, the way we kind of see this working is the two of us tag teaming to have a primary contact, secondary contact, meeting attendance, that both of us would be involved in a capacity that we're aware of what the town needs, and between the two of our schedules, you know, if you needed us here, we can coordinate in two days to get in here, make sure we're here on that meeting. I think that's an appropriate lead time. I'm sure we could do it a day, but I hate to tell you a day, and then it'd be two days, so.
Okay. All right. Can you tell me a little bit about your experience negotiating contracts for municipalities?
Yes. So, with our local governments, I mean, that's, in every local government's a little different, but, you know, when we have a manager council for the government, I've had where, a lot of it were the managers negotiating contracts, but when we don't have manager, the attorney calls the attorney to negotiate contracts. A lot of that is, you know, negotiating certain terms. Thankfully, you know, statutes are fairly favorable to local governments in contracting, so we blame the General Assembly on a lot of the provisions that we have to have in contracts. And so, using that as leverage. And so, we've, you know, we have done that. The other saving grace, so to speak, is the General Assembly requires certain bidding requirements for contracting. And so, using that as the opportunity to lower prices, we're negotiating with contractors.
And I've done, the city that I worked at prior had six unions, and so, I participated in collective bargaining negotiations for all six unions several years in a row. And typically, the way it was done up there is, to Trey's point, that the city manager really took the lead, but as the city attorney, I would be in the room advising the city manager and participating as needed.
I got you. And you said your expansion at this point to Wilmington, it's, you're looking at a shared office space at this point?
Right now, we're at a very early stage of looking at, if it makes sense. I will tell you that the way I kind of see it structured for at least the next, you know, few, few months, a situation where I'm here, again, on average, once a month, that I would try to coordinate when I have to be here for those clients, those litigation matters, those court here. I'm in, you know, I have new Hanover County hearings, and, you know, the first week of the month, other ones start the last week of the month, and they're trying to structure those types of meetings on a day before or the day of the council meeting, so that that commute, you know, if the council's not having to feel the burden of that commute if we're already here, and we're able to make that 45-minute commute instead of that two and a half hour.
I got you. I'm going to show my ignorance here. How do you guys keep up with all the legislative changes that affect municipalities? I mean, laws are changing all the time, and...
That's a, that's a very good question, not an ignorant question at all. And again, this goes back to our firm's level of experience working in local government. We have really good relationships with the UNC School of Government professors, so when new legislation comes out, we have questions, we ask of them, and we've had that, especially of, you know, after COVID, the amount of regulations, the amount of money coming to local governments, that also came with just a changing landscape for the legal community with local governments. And so, we have, we're on all of the listservs that connect us with local government attorneys around the state, connects us with school government. If something comes out, we see it. I mean, they are really good at their bulletins, we see it there, we research it. And that's one of the benefits to, you know, again, our firm with the experience, having, you know, close to, I think, 15 towns and counties, all of them are not of a size that they can have in-house counsel, whose job is to figure out all of these changes. They're in a situation where they hire outside counsel, who is expected to know that. Well, we learn it, and we learn that knowledge, and we're able to share it, we have the benefit of it with all of our tails. And so, that's the benefit.
Tom's about to run out. The commissioners don't have any more questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Town Manager, would you like to?
Let him in.
Would you like to ask some questions?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you got any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, you come from the area of the Bear, is that right?
That's right. That's right.
And you have a mighty nice waterfront community up there, and I always enjoyed going to New Bern. It's a, it's a wonderful place, and people are mighty nice, and hope to get back up there soon by boat, so.
I cer, I certainly understand that, that illness.
Yeah. We're, we're water people down here, like, as you are water people up there, so we have a lot in common. On behalf of the town of Holden Beach and everyone involved, we appreciate your being here, and I'm sure we'll be following up some more questions, and thank you so much for being here.
Happy to answer it. Thank you very much. That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I would encourage, if you've got an extra 10 to 15 minutes, ride up and down the beach and take a look at...
I already did.
We, we did that before we, before we came.
I already did.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
Have a good, safe trip back.
Thank you.
Sounds like their, their organization's kind of deep, as far as the, have expertise.
Yep.
Been there, done that.
Yeah, they've got experience. Mr. Hewitt, I guess we ready for round two?
Mm-hmm.
What is the proper way to discuss this among all of us, is to do that at the end of this, or?
Yeah, we have our own, so.
Well, heck, they bring in the big guns.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. Good evening, good evening.
How are y'all doing?
Very good.
Good, sir.
Happy to have you.
Working or not working?
You got us tuned in?
It's not working. It's the audio, it's a behavior. It's not working.
We brought a copy of our proposal, if anybody needs it or help.
We have it.
While the clerk is getting our electronic stuff in order, you commissioners want to introduce yourselves, or do you want to just get right in? Sir, I'm Tom Myers.
Rick Parfus.
I'm Alan Powell, the mayor.
I'm Rick Smith.
Paige Star.
David Hewitt.
All righty. Thank you so much for being here. The town of Holden Beach has been a town since 1969, and we're a small town, proud of what we are and who we are, received a lot of awards through the years. I hope you've had time, did you ride up and down, take a look at us? We think that we're a pretty clean, organized place and proud of the simplicity that we have here and lack of oversized, overdone commercial, we're a family beach and...
I was gonna say, Mayor, that was the first thing I noticed, we do a lot of work in northern outer banks as well, and there you have homes that I remember growing up with, like the ones on the beachfront, now have been built in 21 or whatever, for many of them. Listen, I did see a lot of those.
Yeah. Okay, I think we've allocated, what, 30 minutes, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, if we would, look at the clock, we're on schedule, so I would say to you, we're very informal here, and so anything you want to interrupt and say or be part of a, just a discussion, that would be great. So you have the floor first and say whatever you want to say, and then we'll ask each one of the commissioners if they want to ask you any questions. Okay?
Well, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'll just start off, and then you all can talk about yourself, and I have been fortunate to be with this law firm since last year. I've been an attorney for almost 30 years, and I have a, I have a background in public service. I have, for the last several years, I've kind of had two things going on in my life. One is that I've been a professor at a law school where I teach local government, and then I also, at the same time, was an elected official myself for 14 years, including four terms as mayor of Tarboro. So now, I, when I decided to step out of elected service, I decided, you know, I'm gonna do something still involved with local government and met with a law firm, and it seemed like a great fit for me because I feel, you know, I'm on this side of the table now, but I kind of know what it's like when I'm on that side of the table, and so it's helped me a lot, and also just in terms of the teaching I've done for the last several years. So I've been spending the last year or so, you know, going to meetings, studying ordinances, and do whatever assignments they give me, covering different places, and I also, although we live in the triangle, we also have a place at Sunset Beach, so I come back and forth a lot, and so I'm very familiar with Holden Beach. I mean, I, this is the first beach I ever went to, it's just beautiful, but it's, this beach is down in Prince County, Austin. So, so anyway, that's, that's one, those are several reasons why serving as the town of Holden Beach's attorney, they're really good at this to me, just my, my area of expertise, and also just my, what I would bring to, to you as a former elected and also as an attorney who understands, you know, a lot of the issues related to this. So I would go ahead and turn it over to these folks, you guys can talk more about the firm also.
So my name's TC Moore, this, I'm the managing partner of the firm, and actually, Lydia and Brady would be the folks you'd be talking to on a day-to-day basis, but, you know, we think our deep bench is one of the things that's really important, you know, small towns, it can be hard to get help sometimes when you need it, and every person in our firm does local government land use work, so Lydia's not available, talk to Brady. Brady's not available, give me a call. We think that's one thing that's really important for the work we do. Let Brady talk a little bit more about our firm and kind of our firm philosophy.
Yeah, so my name's Brady Herman, I'm one of the partners at the Bro Law Firm. I, about 15 months ago, became the city attorney for Southport. Bob Cornic, who's also at our firm, he is the city, the town attorney for Boiling Springs Lakes. So we do already have a bit of a presence in this county, and obviously would be, you know, think it would be a good opportunity to expand our business, you know, with Lydia being the primary attorney and me being the sort of backup or secondary attorney. And I guess I'll, I'll start with that, in any of these proposals and our representation for our municipal boards, we always have one primary attorney and one secondary attorney in case there's any conflict, but really, it's a tandem representation. So we think that's really important, and actually, a lot of our clients appreciate that, it actually becomes more cost-effective, depending on our respective skill sets, but also it's much more efficient, what we believe is more quality representation to our municipal boards. And I'll just sort of briefly explain the Bro Law Firm's philosophy in terms of our general counsel representation. It really boils down to serving, supporting, and protecting our municipal boards, as well as placing a great emphasis on, you know, a good working relationship with our firm and you all. So just to sort of unpack that a little bit, you know, as our role of general counsel, we are legal advisors, we're not dictators. So in terms of our role, is whenever we go through our representation, we'll always keep that distinction in mind. You know, we're not here to go and promote profit agendas, to go and have our own on the scale of any decision made or otherwise direct board direction or policy. You know, that's your all's role as elected officials. What we try to go and do, and our goal is, is to help, you know, guide you all through parameters of the law, and, you know, we don't go and otherwise interfere with, you know, board decision making. And with that, we also go and support our, our boards, seeking to do anything that we can in effectuating our board's goals, whatever that may be. And we also go and protect our boards, and that's to say that, you know, we'll do anything that we can to keep the boards out of harm's way, free from suit, and that we will solicitally, you know, defend and litigate as necessary. We certainly have the experience between all of our members with our firm in that area. And then lastly, I'll just sort of mention, and I think this is very important, in any type of attorney-client relationship, especially as the role of a municipal attorney, is this close working relationship with you all as a board, as well as each individual commissioner. And that also aligns with our relationship with the manager and mayor, and having this close personal relationship, because we feel like that's actually one of the best ways for us to be able to guide and advise you all, you know, address situations that may come up on the front end, so they don't fall by the wayside and turn to something bigger on the back end. So that, that's, I want to sort of explain sort of our sort of general philosophy. Do you have any questions on sort of our model between Lydia and I of being the primary and secondary, we're happy to answer those questions. Happy to get it through with our experience with the firm, I mean, we represent 25 municipalities, we just signed on another city today and represent one county, and do a lot of outside counsel work, as TC mentioned, not only on the coast, in areas like Currie's Up County and that type of thing, but we do a lot of outside counsel work in representing for any board of adjustments.
Wow. Okay. Commissioners, you want to?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just had a couple of questions, and I guess part of it is tied to the travel. So curious for Boiling Springs, Southport, are you remote to their meetings, do you attend in person?
So yeah, great question. So I attend their meeting once a month. They usually have another, I would call it a secondary regular meeting, they don't, they don't call it like a work session or anything like that. I don't usually attend those. I have just a couple of times when I first started on, but what, I'd say a handful of times, if there's like a closed session item, then I'll just go and do that via Zoom with them on those off meetings. And I would say maybe once or twice I've called in on one of those just to talk about a specific agenda item or ordinance that may be in my opinion. And so with them, I just do one flat rate, and really, there's been absolutely no barrier of distance for us. Like, I, I do live in Raleigh, so I'm a little bit closer than our Chapel Hill office, but really, you know, with the technology that we have, you know, I drive down once a month, and that's typically been outside of maybe normal course.
Okay. Our meetings are on Tuesday nights, 5:30, and sometimes they run kind of late in terms of driving back to Raleigh, I wasn't sure if that syncs up with the other ones.
Yeah, sure. And our, and our rate that we, that I, we did for Southport, for you all as well, like our stay here, you know, that's all included, so to speak. So there's plenty of times now that Southport's meetings go well past 9 o'clock, so I'm usually standing at a time, and essentially that is included in our meetings.
Okay. So that's the, you, you put 900 a, a meeting in person, is that?
In person.
Okay. And then including travel, and if it takes a hotel, it takes a hotel?
That's right.
And then 450 is, is virtually. Now, we're on Facebook Live, so it's not Zoom, you know, I don't know if you're in that situation before. In terms of being able to participate, it's a little bit different technology.
And if I can, I mean, Facebook Live, we've got, is a really great way for public boards to broadcast to the public.
Yep.
Sometimes I'm asked to do a closed session remotely, and the mayor just picks up his phone and sets it on the, on the device there, and that's how we do the closed session. So we can really go up and down in the technology, if we don't need, you know, fancy setup to be able to work with the law.
Okay. Yeah, we've tended to have challenges with the sound, especially if it's loud in the room and we've got somebody dialed in with a phone, and, you know, if we were to call on legal help, it'd probably be pretty important to, you know, understand the situation that led to that, so, okay. And you, you just kind of estimated 10 hours a week, the, the, the kind of hour estimates that are in the proposal are representative, or just what you're thinking?
Yeah, I believe we set the proposal kind of based on the advertisement, what, what you folks were asking for in terms of, you know, attendance at meetings, being available every week for questions or whatever, and as needed, really.
Okay. And can I ask how often you're at Sunset Beach, so that it'd be a little bit easier if we were to need you to come over for something, or?
If it would not be a problem.
Okay.
I would be able to be here when needed.
Okay. I, I just cur, is it a second home rental?
Yeah, it's a vacation home, this summer it's rented, but after that, we won't be renting it, and so it'll be, it's a second home, and we'll come back and forth if needed.
Okay. So you're looking for opportunities to come here and spend?
Exactly. There you go.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Oh, wait, can I, can I replay? Sorry. Coastal experience, we've got a couple of unique issues. We did a big beach nourishment project, had to get easements, and it was problematic for certain property, you know, some people signed up right away, others absolutely had to go to, you know, condemnation. And then also, the other big one, I think, it's looming out there, is the inlet hazard area, where they're trying to do a massive expansion, and it's still up in the air, but I can see that possibly causing problems, and I know there's been talk of, of taking legal recourse to try to stop it. So just curious what your experience is on, in those types of very specific coastal challenges?
So we have to put a bit of experience. I mean, honestly, we've been working on the coast since before beach re-nourishment became widely used. We had a running joke that one of our big clients in the outer banks is called the Bagman, and that's because he was in sandback business, and we more than once had to give variance for push that away in recognition for other things like that, so very familiar with KAMA and CRC in terms of connotations and, you know, easement acquisition. With the exception of overlaying KAMA and also the law of public trust, that kind of work looks in terms of the law, like what would seem to rest in state. So we have a lot of community area in the combination with a lot of the area with easement acquisition negotiation, or working with driveway agents, or going to get through and down staffs, it's an area that will be pretty familiar.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
My, my question was, I think Lydia's already answered it, is your availability being local here after the end of the summer, which those 90 days go off so fast, but it was, it would be, you know, usually we have the one meeting a month, that is a pretty, but as typically, if there's something that we don't get completed during a meeting, we'll schedule one for later in the month, and usually it's a relatively short meeting. And so, again, my thoughts would be to start with, that to get us familiar with your firm and you familiar with our group, that it would, you know, be important to be here at most of the meetings to, to start with until you kind of get a, a feel for how, how we do it. As Alan, Mr. Mayor pointed out, that, you know, sometimes it's, it's kind of informal, but we do try to, try to follow the rules and just need some, at times, we need some guidance as to how we can do it, or what we can do, or what we can't do. So I think it's important to kind of figure out what we got going on here to, to start with.
That would be my intention to be in person, it's always, I think.
Dr. Dyer, you have anything?
I think they answered everything that I had a question.
Or you got anything?
Yeah, I've got a couple. You mentioned protecting the town and protecting the board. How would you advise us if we, you know, on decisions we're potentially going to make that may be litigious in nature? And what I'm looking at is, I don't want to be up here in one of our normal meetings and we propose something and you go, "That's really not a good idea." We'd like to not get to that point. So what would your approach be?
Well, if I may, and then, um, I would certainly, I would, and this would be, you know, one, with the Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, you know, about the procedure you all follow for an agenda review and agenda preparation. So my sense would be that, as that was being put together, I would be included in that in some way to look it over for any potential pitfalls or issues or things we spot ahead of the meetings, right? And then, of course, you folks are a positive community, so you might know, you know, this is going to be an issue, someone's going to bring this up, you know, let's go ahead and head it off to the past before we get there, you know?
And, and certainly, if I put an, an item on the agenda and it has a certain air about it, you're going to call me and ask me to explain a little more, I would hope?
Well...
Because not, not, the agenda as it's developed doesn't always have all the information that you may need to spot a problem, is kind of what I'm getting to.
And again, I, I, you know, if we're, we're selected to represent you, I would talk to your manager and mayor and figure out, how, how best do I get out with everyone? You know, some, some boards like you to talk to all the council members, some boards like you to work through one, just for ease or whatever. I, I would do however, however this board thinks they can work the best. And certainly, equal access to everyone, and everyone having equal access to me as a, as a, and that kind of thing.
Okay.
And I was just gonna go and add, you know, and I've had this happen several times over the last years, if something's very impressive, then I'll tell the manager, hey, I'm just gonna go write a short sort of, you know, to the extent that it can be confidential memorandum to the board, get that, you know, to the governing body, and then from there, we can decide, okay, because there's going to be an immediate follow-up to this, like a special meeting, or at least just to make them aware of it, you know, before the next meeting or something comes up. And I think that's sort of a, a direct action approach to something that's urgent.
Okay.
Just two other thoughts to add on that. I think words that come to my mind that are really important are collaboration and also recognizing that you're a political party. What I mean by that is, things go much better when you know there's a hot issue coming up if you communicate it with the manager, so we can know in advance. I've been in more than one board meeting where, right, Commissioner Chauvin, I mean, the jurisdiction has screamed it, and asked for an answer right then in open session. It's like, well, let me look at that and research it right now in front of the eyes of the public. And things go a lot better, and we've talked, and we're able to have that discussion in a closed session.
Agreed.
The other thing that's so important is that, and Brady already said this really well, we're not going to take sides. You may have a view, it may be different from other members on the board, and it's not our place to tell you what the right answer is, it's our place to tell you what the law is and try and help you get where you as a board want to go. Sometimes that's three members, sometimes that's two members.
Okay. So what, how do you see your role in helping us shape public policy if we're going off to do something? How would you help us not mess that up?
Well, you know, that's, that's a great question, because I've been challenged with that a little for this last year, when I've been on this side and on that side. Because when I was on that side, I shaped policy all the time, you know, but on this side, it, it's really, as TC said, it's more around giving you the law around what you can work, and then, and then perhaps guiding you in a broad sense, but, but you're the decision maker, you're the ones who are setting policy for the town. I mean, I'm happy to give you my insight on some policy matters if it matters to you, but you're the folks who are kind of doing that shaping of... but you're the folks who are kind of doing that shaping of it. Now, certainly, a lot of laws are created, I always tell my students, you know, law informs policy and policy informs law, you know? People want to do a lot of things, but you can't do it because the law won't allow you to do it, right? And so, and so my sense is that I will be making sure what we're doing fits within, you know, North Carolina general statutes and state law and what's coming down from the General Assembly, and then guiding you as you wish, as you develop the policy for your town.
And just one other thought I would give, this kind of goes, my thought about politics, we represent sort of the whole spectrum of, from folks that would be considered sort of very much on the left, and also very much on the right conservative. And the reason we can do that, what Lydia said, we're offering you the law. And if you ask us a policy question, you know, how does this work, we'll give you an honest answer. But again, it's not our place to tell you what your planning should look like if you are committed.
Okay. You guys seem to have a whole lot on your plate with 25 municipalities. What makes you interested in Holden Beach other than it's a good excuse to visit your home, which I can certainly understand?
Well, I mean, speaking personally, you know, when, I mean, I did friends with Beacon, and I've been down here a lot. And, you know, I've been around for years and years visiting in this area. And when I decided to step my foot back into private practice and Bro Law Firm gave me the opportunity to join them, the intention was for me to try to pick up a few towns and start working with them as their attorney.
Got you.
And so Holden Beach just jumped out to me as one that would be a good fit for us. And, you know, I don't know if you all want to add on to that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I've really enjoyed, you know, being counsel for Southport. I kind of already mentioned it before, you know, it's us, you know, sort of growing our practice to the other side of the state.
One other thing I would add, I mean, we do represent a lot of the governments. We're actually bringing on another associate next week, and we have one more coming here if work allows, but it is a business, obviously, the charter rate, we made remarks about that. And also, those relationships are really important. We've been the county attorneys in Carver since 1979. We've been the county attorney in Hillsborough, I think, since the late 80s. And those are the kind of relationships we prefer, where we know the community, the community is us. So I can't say what happened to Holden Beach. Some communities have worked with us, and after a year, they say, we're going to go in a different direction. We respect that. But we'd like to do a long-term relationship.
Okay. That's all I have, sir.
More commissioner questions? Mr. Hewitt, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Attorney clerk, you got anything?
No, sir.
I have a question for you, ma'am. How did we lose you to Sunset Beach?
I was a little embarrassed to say it, because I know, I know, it's a battle of beaches, right? I mean, it might be, they're both beautiful. No, why? I had a college roommate who, after that one visit to Holden, her family would take me on vacations over there, and then I, from then on, it just kind of started heading in that direction.
So they did.
But it's sure, it's sure is beautiful. They, they both, in my view, have, have kind of retained that sense of, of some family atmosphere and not high rises and not working with them and all that.
Okay. And where were you an instructor, professor?
I teach at the North Carolina Central University School of Law. And I've been there, I've been a professor there for almost 14 years.
The, I'm trying to figure how to ask this without sounding too, too inquisitive, but the experiences that you've had in defending multiple types of government, county, local towns, cities. What kind of a overall record do you perceive yourselves as having had success-wise? Have you had your butt spanked real bad anywhere, or have you got a good record?
That's a great question. Imagine, and I'll take a shot, y'all can jump in.
In other words, if we looked you up, I mean, how are you going to score? I mean.
Well, I'll tell you, it's an excellent record. Now, here's what you've got to remember, is sometimes a client handles a dog in a case. I mean, if y'all didn't talk with us and you have hearing, this is a real story I'm telling you. It's a quasi-traditional hearing, and you have a terrible decision with no basis, well, you know what? We're just going to lose that one in court. Now, we've worked with you upfront, and we're going to give you the best advice we can. And we're going to do our best to tell you where the law's great, and where you've got some work, and we're going to defend you as best we can. So I think we have a very good record. If you had to give it like a batting average? I'd say it's more than 500, but I don't know if I could give you any proper numbers of that.
If I may, something I've noticed over the last year is we often get inquiries from clients that maybe tried it first with another firm, and then they come to us. And so, I don't know, I think that speaks to the fact that, that they, they know that they give them, you know, another shot at it, or that, you know, maybe they're getting something from us that they didn't get from the first place they went.
I think, I think the one thing needs to be said in my asking those questions, the history of the town of Holden Beach, we have, Mr. Hewitt has been here, what, 15, 16 years?
Yes, sir.
We don't have a history of having gone to the courts and had to put hats in hand and embarrass, and we just haven't been there through the years. So we have a pretty good record of staying away from the courts, and we're proud of that. So we, as Mr. Smith said, we try to run things properly and try to be on top of things. So, so we're not a risky client for you to get involved with.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to imply that we're bad boys and girls, looking for cover here, but, but we've been doing a pretty good job through the years. And I've been here since the town's been a town, so I know the history of the town very well and proud of it. Well, we've got about 2 minutes left. Anybody got any follow-ups?
No, sir.
From this, our diocese are over there? If not, thank you so much for being here. And you're an impressive group.
Thank you very much.
And I hear a lot of representation from Hillsborough and the Triad. I'm not going to ask who's a Tar Heel and who's a Duke.
I went to UNC for good bad reason.
Mighty, mighty bull, man. I saw. A little more Carolina blue, Mr. Smith here.
There you go.
My wife's a Duke fan, and I think my son likes State, so.
There you go.
I put my daughter through Duke. I have to be a Duke fan.
Yeah, it's a game, dude.
Good political answer, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good safe trip. All right, commissioners and staff, what's your pleasure here?
Motion to adjourn?
Well, yes, sir. But is, when are we going to get a chance to, you know, is, we can't do it, you know, privately, but matter of fact, can we discuss anything that we just heard tonight, or?
Let me help you out here if I may.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anybody else that we, that's lined up, and we go over where we are in the line of interviews and decision-making?
Cindy was the last one I put in, and she's going to be interviewed next Monday at the start of the budget meeting, so next Monday after we receive.
All right. Are we, are we giving her 30 minutes, or what's the plan? I mean, we're giving everybody the exact time?
I was, I was just honestly going to put her, and then the budget meeting said we would just go straight into, I mean, I wouldn't give her more than 30 minutes, but I'm not sure if she would take 30 minutes, but you guys have experience with her.
Well, in fairness, to keep us out of trouble, is, is it fair to say with everybody's approval, she could have the 30 minutes if she wanted to present herself?
Right.
And no more?
Right.
But she could have less if she wanted less, but she's got 30 minutes.
Right.
Just to be fair. Okay. And that, and we haven't had any more applications, so?
Correct, because the RFP was due by that certain date, and we'll never receive the three. So I guess after you guys meet with Cindy, then at a future meeting, you guys would want to put a discussion of possible action on so you can discuss who you want to go.
Okay. So what I'm trying, trying to do here and help Mr. Smith, so when, once we get through with that last interview and what Mr. Smith's inquiring about, and I agree with him, are we going to gather together and discuss these folks that have applied and shown an interest? Are we going to have a specific meeting for that? Or are we going to, are we going to go into, Mr. Hewitt, are we going to go into a recess situation, not recess, executive session to talk about hiring, or what, what's the procedure that the town is going to follow once we have the last interview?
It's determined by the board what y'all want to do.
And that's what I'm trying to get to.
It seems like the, after the last interview, we roll right into a budget meeting. Is that correct? So I don't know, we want to extend that meeting or put it at the beginning?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out.
And then what would the next meeting be? It'd be?
The next one's that following Friday. I think the 7th might be the date, but there's one next Monday and next Friday. And typically, it's not discussed in executive session. Typically, it's discussed out in the open.
Are we going to need both meetings for the budget?
I'll have to read this before I answer that question.
Yeah, I would guess so based on.
You may get more meetings depending on how it looks.
I think off the top of my head, it might be, there's Monday, Friday, and then there's one the following week, too. There's three more scheduled before the actual.
If you don't have to have all three, I don't want to.
Yeah, I hear you.
You said June 3rd?
June 3rd. I have to look at it. The June 3rd is at 5:30, I believe. And then I, 7th at 3:00 p.m., I believe.
And then June 12.
You got the other, you got the 3, 2, the 12? Yep, here we go. And June 12th at 3:00 p.m. also.
12th at 3:00 also.
Correct. So I mean, you can discuss it at one of those meetings, or then the next one would be the 18th, the regular board meeting, and you can discuss it at that. It's completely up to the board how you want to move forward of the actual election.
So the 7th is at 3:00 p.m., and then the next one you said is the?
The 12th.
The 12th, and that's at?
3:00 p.m.
3:00 p.m. And then?
Then the public hearing for the budget is 5:00 p.m. on the 18th, so the start of our regular board meeting. We have three public hearings that day.
I would guess the 7th or the, the next one of those, after we have the meeting, I think we're going to roll into a budget meeting, so then we would put it on one of the next budget meetings.
I'd like to do it on the 7th. That just gives me a little time to consider whatever Sydney, you know, what her interview is like, and then we can have a discussion on the 7th and make a selection. Does that make sense?
That works for me.
Personally? I know I don't have a vote, but personally, if I was a commissioner, I'd probably want to have the last interview and then have some time to go over and review and compare.
Yeah.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
So that's what we're saying.
Yeah, because she interviews.
Not make a decision. The last interview's on the 3rd, so then the decision would go to the 7th.
Are you saying that, Alan, you recommended pushing another meeting out?
Well, I, like I said, I don't have a vote anyways.
I think we should do it.
Well, but you've got experience, so.
I think we should do it at the regular board meeting on the 18th.
We can do that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's good. I'll do that.
It's really.
We've got the budget hearing before that meeting, so.
You know, I mean, it's going to be hard, the 7th and, and the 12th of, especially at 3 o'clock in the afternoon is really, really tough for me to do.
So we can, I would just do it at the June.
Yeah, I'll go with that. Do it during the BOC?
Put it on as a normal agenda, because we've got the public hearing for the budget ahead of that BOC meeting.
It would be a normal agenda, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That works for me.
That way, if the public has any comment, they have a better chance of that.
Right.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So what was the final decision?
It's going to be the agenda item on the normal BOC meeting.
18th BOC.
Now, may I make a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Parkus? Yes, sir. I will second that.
I don't want to set fire to the carpet when I leave, but, you know.
I have the motion and second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.